All right, we are going to get going now. We got the thumbs up. Welcome all of you to our planning board meeting this Wednesday, April 15th, 2015. First item on our agenda is our roll call. We have Lisa Buck, we have Jed McIntosh, myself, Phil Ruck, we've got Mark Kittredge, and we've got Krista Schwinter. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda.
Motion to accept the agenda.
Very good. Any discussion, additions, fractions? None of those in favor of the agenda? Next up is the approval of the minutes of March 18th, 2015.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion, any edits? Very good. Thank you for your usual great job, Ruth. All those in favor of the minutes as presented? Next up, we have two public hearings this evening. The first one is a contr-
I'm going to abstain from that because I wasn't here, so just so to record that.
That is correct. So we only have, we still have four on the minutes. Next up is a public hearing for a contract zone request by Sundance Campbell and Gary Kennedy, who are requesting a contract zone for the property located at 384 College Avenue to change the zoning designation from medium-density residential, that is MDR, to a university zone to allow for various uses, including a sorority/fraternity house, tax map 11-2, lot 5. Lisa, I believe you-
Yeah, I'm a member of that neighborhood.
Very good. As our typical fashion, this is a, you know, an involved public hearing. We're going to be voting on that contract zone or making a recommendation to council. Do you feel that you can be impartial and have a discussion with the board?
I do.
Any comments from the board? She lives on Kell Street, which is across from the project.
I'm okay with-
Okay. Applicant?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate you mentioning that. Very good. So can I have the applicant come up and tell us about what you're proposing?
Good evening. Not used to the mic. Everyone able to hear me okay from here? Okay. Well, thank you for your time this evening, and thanks to those of you in the community that have come out. Those of you that don't know me, I was raised here in Orno. I will be awarded my second degree from the University of Maine here in a few weeks, so I do consider myself a part of the community, though many of you may not know me. About 10 months ago, Gary Kennedy, my partner and I, and his wife Lorelei, started to look at the property on the corner of Charles Street and College Avenue as a potential sorority house, something that we wanted to look at in terms of private ownership. We've worked with the town to a large degree to try to put together a proposal that I think works. I have spent some time in the neighborhood trying to get to know some of you, though I haven't gotten to know many of you, so I look forward to our dialogue tonight. Let me take a few minutes to give you a brief overview of what our plan is. I'd also like to let you know that we have some other people here supporting us. Our attorney, Arian Stockdale, has worked with the town to a large degree to put this proposal together, and Steve Ribble, his landscape architect, who's worked on a design for the property that we feel is appropriate for, you know, for that property. Things we move forward, I want to keep this, you know, I want to make our case, but I don't want to come across as, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is I want to come across as genuine. I've not prepared these comments, other than to put a few bullet points together, though in working on this for the last 10 months, we have some very well-thought-out ideas about how we're supposed to and how we will proceed with this if we are given the opportunity to. So I'd like to briefly outline those, where necessary, pull in people that have assisted us to bring greater clarity to that and see where we are. So I'd like to start with just the basic idea that Gary and I had when we started this process about 10 months ago, and I think to do that, it's important to think about the traditional structure of how fraternity-sorority houses are run, because that is the preferred use that we have for this property. We also have talked to the town of Orno about using it for international student housing, and that's something we're very interested in, and there's some other uses, but, you know, to be honest, it is a house that we would like to use as a sorority house. And so talking about the traditional structure of how these things have been managed over the generations, it's important to know that typically how a sorority or fraternity house is owned and managed is that an alumni group gathers to purchase the property, and they set up generally a nonprofit corporation to run that with a group of volunteers. They lease that property to the local chapter of whatever organization it may happen to be, but the young men or women that live in those houses typically are responsible for nearly all of the responsibilities that go along with ownership: setting rent, collecting rent, maintaining the property, making mid-to-long-term plans about how to manage that property, when to replace a roof, when to work on the facade, things like that. That's a structure that, in my opinion, and I've worked with fraternities for about 20 years, and in my opinion, that's a system that arguably maybe worked a generation or two ago, but in this day and age, I think at a minimum, that's a system that's very vulnerable to problems. Vulnerabilities like a lack of accountability, you know, young men in their early twenties or even young women maybe don't have a long-term vision for what needs to happen at that property. Their, you know, their tenancy there is going to be very short, so they're not necessarily planning for long-term improvements. You know, certainly can be financial difficulties on two fronts. One, you know, if you consider putting a group of 20 young people in charge of $100,000 budget on an annual basis, sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. But also, there's not a financial incentive to run the property at its best, meaning traditional Greek property would have rent eight months a year, with four months collecting no rent over the summer. Again, maybe that worked 40, 50, 60 years ago, but in this day and age, it's hard enough to keep up rental properties if you're not charging 12 months' rent. I would argue that you don't have the revenue to properly maintain and improve these types of properties. And also, with that structure, the structure where an alumni group owns the house, they lack alternative tenants. There is no motivation to ever move on from a tenant, even if it's a troubled tenant. In our structure, we look to address that. We look to have private ownership here where we're not affiliated with any one entity, so that our, you know, potential tenants would not be limited to one. We would be, in fact, having an incentive if we had a troubled tenant to move along to a better tenant, and therefore be better neighbors. And I think this structure of private ownership would be a theme throughout our proposal, in the sense that we have accountability. We have both financial incentives and moral incentives to take care of that property and be active landlords and actively good neighbors within both the neighborhood and the community of Orno. When we talk about our proposal, and I may ask our attorney, Arian, to step in here, I don't know how much I need to explain about what a contract zone proposal is, but I think in layman's terms, a contract zone proposal is a situation where we're asking the town for the opportunity to use this property with some very specific limitations. We're not asking for, to use all purposes allowed within a university zone district, just some limited uses that would traditionally be associated with a university zone district. But probably more importantly to everyone in this room, with a contract zone, we have set with, you know, through cooperation with the town, and to the degree of being able to talk to a few of the neighbors, with the neighborhood, we were able to set performance standards for how we will need to run that property. If we fail on any of those standards, that contract zone could be removed. So our ability to run this as a sorority house or as a house for international high school students is not something that is a constant given. If we cannot meet our standards, the town has the right to remove our ability to use the property that way, and I think that's kind of an important designation, in terms of, you know, how and why this project should be set up to be successful. I will talk about our proposal specifically. I don't know if that's available to everyone. We do have copies, if anyone would like to take a look at that, but within this contract zone, there are at least 10 very specific performance standards that we do need to be accountable for, and I've tried to list these on the next two slides. Probably the most important related to what would be deemed a disorderly property, there is a legal definition of what a disorderly property is here in the town of Orno. I'm not in a position to share that, but I think the term speaks for itself. There are very specific measures within this contract zone that would indicate if we continue to be a disorderly property, and Arian can share those in a moment, we would lose our ability to maintain tenancy in that property. We have very specific standards for alcohol. Now, that wouldn't be nearly as important if we were running this as a bed and breakfast or as housing for international students, but with our preferred use of a sorority, that becomes very important. We've built in some very specific language that would be in the contract zone and in the leases, by law, in our leases, about what can happen. A few of those, and Arian will be able to expand on these, would be that there's no open containers of alcohol. The amount of alcohol is limited. If there are parties in the lease, it's required that there would be a bartender there to serve. This is quite different than any of the other fraternity or sorority houses as they exist today. We're trying to be very restrictive in terms of alcohol. Some people may ask, you know, why you wouldn't have a dry house, and that's always a possibility, and I guess I would remind you that, you know, you want to be able to manage student housing, and if you make things too restrictive, you push people out into environments where there may be no control. I think our plan has a good balance of control for issues like that, and we can talk more to that if people have questions. Other items that are specific in the contract zone are standards in terms of litter and how garbage needs to be disposed of and maintained on the property. I think Steve can show how we've designed that to work here in a few moments. Maximum occupancy becomes very important. We're proposing that 23 people could reside at this house, but there are specific standards about house guests. We would not be in a position, we don't want to be in a position, nor could we legally be in a position, where 23 people live there and they had 12 significant others staying on the property. We have very specific standards designed in through cooperation with Evan and Arian about keeping 23, really, to 23. There's also very specific legal language to owner accountability in terms of what Gary, Lorelei, and I would be responsible for if we do not meet these standards. We would have, you know, there would be recourse on the town in terms of taking legal action, specifically against us as landlords, if we are not meeting the expectations of the contract zone of the town. Related to that, lease transparency, I'm not sure this has happened in town to this point, but legally, we're required to notify the town of any violations of our lease. So if in our lease, we say that there cannot be common-source alcohol, and that the university police find out that there was a punchbowl at an unauthorized party, we need to inform the town of that on a regular basis. If we find that a young lady has her boyfriend staying there more than the seven nights that they're permitted, or whatever the case may be, we need to report that to the town. So I think the town would have a lot of, you know, maybe even unprecedented access to look into our leases and help us build out the structure that might work for this particular student housing situation. Other things related to lighting, signage, fireworks, and firearms, which are prohibited in that neighborhood anyhow, but occasionally, you know, have occurred at other fraternities or written into our lease, there cannot be livestock, cannot be pets. And also, we've worked strongly to try to find buffers that would shield the neighborhood to the best that we can from any kind of traffic, any lighting, things like that. You know, at this point, I think I'd ask Arian to come up and speak a little bit more to those performance standards, and also maybe tie our proposal more towards the comprehensive plan and the land use ordinance.
Good evening, everyone. So there's a, there are a couple of requirements. Any contract zone by statute has to be consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. I think Orno's comprehensive plan is a good one, but it's not, it doesn't have any specific language or details that really targets the question that we have here, which is how do, does the comprehensive plan deal with sororities or fraternities? There is language that says that the overriding goal of the plan is to balance public and private property rights, which has been consistently upheld by the courts, and I think what I've seen from Evan, Evan's proposals, coming back to me after, through some different drafts, and the responses from my clients, has been a consistent desire to respect the wishes of the public and concerns that they might not have thought about initially, but have been raised by the town or by members of the public. Mr. Campbell and Mr. Kennedy are very interested in making this work in the long run, and that doesn't happen if they aren't paying very close attention to the needs of the community and the concerns of the town. I think they're doing that. The contract zone itself, what it does specifically legally is it, the property now is currently zoned as medium-density residential. That has certain permitted uses. Most of the more commercially viable uses that we're looking to do here, such as the sorority, are not available under that zoning. So the way that the contract zone works is it opens up certain particular uses from the university district zoning that aren't available to MDR, medium-density residential, properties, but only specifically opens those particular options up. It doesn't open everything up. It's just those few itemized things that are in the specific contract. And what the other thing that the contract does is that, in stark contrast to other fraternities and sororities that are, some are located very closely nearby and which uses are grandfathered, I believe, if the town is in a contract zone situation with the owners of the property here, that contract runs with the land, so it's not just a contract with Mr. Campbell and Mr. Kennedy. It's a contract that goes with that land into the foreseeable future. And the reason that's important is because the general kind of ordinance violation recourse that the town has against those fraternities that are grandfathered is good, but this provides substantially more recourse to the town, those things like the lease transparency and the open container provisions about the alcohol. The way I specifically worded it with the alcohol actually is to cap it on a certain size of 20 ounces, so that there's no open-source alcohol that becomes a problem at some parties. The recourse that's provided by the contract zone that the town has basically allows the town a freedom, if there are significant violations of the contract, to bring the owners back into a hearing where the owners have the burden of showing that there was some valid reason for the violations that had occurred, or that they have a plan that's acceptable to the town to remediate those violations. If the owners fail to meet that burden, the contract can be dissolved, or it can, the zoning can be returned to its original status, which would eliminate the ability to operate it as a fraternity or sorority or whatever business, and it would remove the financial benefit of owning the property in the first place. So there's a significant pressure and incentive on the owners, whether it's the current applicants or future owners down the line, to make sure that they pay extra caution and heed to all of those requirements, because if they don't, they can lose what makes that business work. Specifically, in the, in the contract that we've proposed and we're still working on, we've mentioned the alcohol and the open source. Orno also has a disorderly property ordinance. There's a specific section of the proposed contract that references that. It begins by saying that it must be in strict compliance with that ordinance, but it goes on to elevate the recourse the town has under that. Essentially, the way it's worded now is that there's a certain number of disorderly events within a certain various timeframes that trigger a designation as a disorderly property. The way I've worded it in the contract zone is to tighten those restrictions up by making it, you know, by having less, a shorter period of time that those, to trigger that type of designation and activate the town's ability to make the owners explain themselves, essentially. The other thing that's unique about this is the lease transparency provision. Part of the concern here is the accountability, and we wanted to make it very clear that we understand that. So what I tried to do to address those concerns was to make it clear that any of these requirements, they go not just to the owners, but they go to any sublesses, any tenants, regardless of how many times, if, you know, if it's a third-party lessee. All of those, that recourse that the town has continues to any of those parties. And additionally, all of these requirements have to be included in clear language in the lease. So for instance, the disorderly property and the open container provisions of the contract regarding alcohol, those have to be in any lease to any tenant. So you can't get out. It's not, there's no way to abdicate responsibility. That has to continue down the line. And then if there's lease violations, as Mr. Campbell described, the owners, whether it's these applicants or future applicants, have an affirmative duty to make sure the town's aware of them, so that we don't have a situation where these provisions are being flouted by subtenants, sublesses, without the owners evicting them or moving on to better tenants. So I guess at this point, if there are, if there are any specific questions, or if Mr. Ribble would like to present further information, we'd move on to that.
Thank you, Arian. I think we'd like to take a minute. Certainly, there'll be a time for questions, I assume. I think we'd like Mr. Ribble to take a moment to present our design of the property, and I think that'll speak to many of the performance standards.
Is it okay that this is a little low?
We might as well step in front.
Yeah.
If they have one.
Don't let that work. Okay. I don't know where these might go, but there's 15 copies there.
Okay.
There's still 15 copies. There's 16. Thank you. So the idea here is, Steve Ribble, landscape architect, contacts by design in Bangor. There are, I'll best to do this.
Can folks see this? Do we need to put one over there or anything?
Okay, great. What we tried to do here, and I think it's part of the public record, that this plan, this concept is in black and white in the application, but we tried to make it a little easier to read and understand for folks, so that we can explain that we've addressed, while this is not a site plan hearing, that's a future phase, depending on what, while a sorority is the primary goal or concept of the project, it's not at this point guaranteed that that would be the tenant. So this particular drawing reflects a general, there are 12 rooming units in this facility. The performance standards for such within the ordinance explain that you need to do certain things, and those things are the number of parking spaces, the buffering, and the disposition of driveways and widths and such. So what we've tried to do here, obviously, is make it a little easier to read. If you'll notice, I know I need to speak in the mic, so I'm going to try to, try to do this somehow. Thanks, Arian. What we've, what we've done here is followed, with a corner property in this particular zone, and actually in each zone, we need to address both street fronts as a front yard. So what we've done here is buffered each side very heavily. We don't have specific plants called out, but the symbols that are there are following along with the perform, or the land use ordinance, in that there are a certain number of evergreen species and a certain number of deciduous species. We have taken great effort to shield the headlight aspects of this as cars, or vehicles, I should say, turn in and out of the property, that we've tried to take care of the adjacent properties. The headlights are buffered by vegetation. We have softened edges so that circulation is controlled, so people don't cut through certain areas, so that refuse containers are screened from view. We have maintained a green space in the back. You know, there is going to be some, you know, lawn area. I would imagine that there would be a desire to have some lawn area just for whatever they might do. The other side of this, too, is at the top of this drawing, in the middle of the house currently, that is a paved parking area that goes almost the length of the house to the street, and we're proposing that that be removed and it be turned into a patio and buffered very heavily again along Charles Street, so that both the patio and-
There will be time for public comment. Could we please stop the conversation? Thank you.
Thank you. So that area, the house itself, at street level, will be heavily buffered with vegetation, as well as the patio that would be outside, where they might have a gas grill, or, you know, I have no idea what might use might happen there. Again, we've labeled this a concept because while it does meet the performance standards, this is more of an illustration of the vision that Mr. Campbell and Mr. Kennedy have for the property, as opposed to a specific site plan application. So, but this puts some visual aesthetic to all the contract language that they are trying to explain to everyone.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant before I ask for a summary from Evan?
Just a closing comment, though?
Is, are we at the questions time?
Okay.
I have just a question about what, is there a time limit to correct poor performance in terms of performance standards?
I believe there is. Arian, can you speak to that, or Evan?
It's, as far as I understand it from the, from the contract right now, it's mostly up to the town. If the, if the town's unsatisfied, the town needs to be able to act on that, and so I left it rather open as far as a time, a timeline is concerned. That's both because we don't want to limit the town if some, if there's a serious problem that needs immediate action. We also didn't want to limit the situation too drastically in case there was some type of construction that needed to be made that could take a long time to do.
There are certain timeframes indicated in here, in the proposal. One, you know, I can point out is regarding litter and trash, I think that, you know, any litter or trash would need to be removed within 48 hours, unless in the sole judgment of the code enforcement office, or there's some extenuating circumstance. So there are some timeframes in there, but how they're mitigated, I'm not, you know.
I may have misunderstood the question. I thought the question was about the, in the event there's some type of hearing on the rezoning, and that's left rather open.
You referred to the comp plan. You said we had a good one. Are you referring to the old comp plan? Because the one that we have been at for a number of years now is not actually formally accepted, so I just wanted to clarify your-
I haven't, I haven't seen, I haven't seen, if there's one that hasn't been adopted, I have not seen that yet.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Evan, that was a very thorough review, but you also provided a summary for us. Can you highlight anything? I'd like the board to hear again the process that has gone on to date, because they have been before the council. So if you could clarify anything that you might not have addressed.
Sure. The process for any zoning petition is that the petition actually goes to the town council. The town council typically holds, through one of its committee meetings, community development committee meeting, holds an informal discussion with the petitioner to hear what they have to say and to decide whether or not it is something that they believe should go to the next step, which is to refer to the planning board for a recommendation, as is required by statute and ordinance. The council and the applicant spoke twice about what the contents of a proposed contract zone might be, and on the strength of that, they forwarded it to the planning board for recommendations. The council certainly has not made any decisions, any commitment. They just believed it was ripe to go through, take the next step in the process. They could have simply said, "We're just not comfortable with this at all, and we're not even going to refer it." But, so that, and so they are before you. You make a recommendation to the, to the council. The council will then conduct its own public hearing, which would be in, they've scheduled the date, assuming they receive you, your- the date, assuming they receive your recommendation, however that recommendation might come out. They've scheduled it for their May meeting. And then it would be another 30 days before they could actually act on it. So that's the process. I think it is, a few things, without going, repeating what the applicant has said. We do need evidence of right title and interest before the council can act. They've said that they have a purchase and sale agreement, and I certainly believe them, but we haven't seen it. And we can't go rezoning somebody's property without their permission. And they, so they have to show right title or interest. So we need that. The list of uses is in the contract, proposed contract zone. It includes two-family home, multi-family, with site plan review, to a maximum of one unit for 5,000 square feet of land area. That'd be consistent with multi-family zoning districts, offices such as are already along the street, medical offices and other offices, research and development services, and the specialized rooming house that was mentioned. All those would require site plan review, except for the two-family home. Performance standards, they've explained, they've explained contract zoning adequately, I think, and I've got it in my write-up, so if you have any questions about that, please ask them. The surrounding zoning is indeed medium-density residential and university district. The university district comes to within about three properties of this site, but this site is in the midst of an MDR district, which extends up College Avenue, toward Old Town, and along the side-street neighborhoods. The land uses along College Ave are mixed. There are offices, university-related things, other fraternity houses, small multi-family, Stillwater Village is farther out, College Avenue, and of course, a number of single-family homes, including 12 single-family homes in the Charles Street neighborhood, 12 lots with single-family homes on them. And you've got a map depicting the zoning and the land uses in the immediate vicinity. There is, the most fundamental test of a contract zone is a finding that the council will have to make, in part based on your recommendation, of consistency with the comprehensive plan. Now, the fact that it might be consistent with the comprehensive plan, or not inconsistent at least, does not mean it has to be approved, but that is a threshold test, that there is some support for this kind of land use in the comprehensive plan, in this case, the 1998 plan, as it's been amended. And there are some broad statements, such as continuing to allow a wide variety of housing types within Orenno, including a variety of opportunities for student housing. That is one of the housing goals in the plan, but they are very general statements. I would note that Police Chief Ewing has reviewed the proposed agreement, the contract agreement, and orally, he has not reduced it to writing at this point, but he orally has indicated to me that he's satisfied with the kinds of standards that are in that document. You have Deputy Fire Chief and Fire Marshal Henry Vaughn's comments, and he's indicated that, you know, there are certainly a number of things that will have to happen to make this consistent with the fire code, the life safety code. A number of improvements will be required before it can be occupied as a sorority or fraternity. I would note that 23 persons appear to be right at the maximum occupancy under the fire code, which is for this kind of use. If some part of the floor area had to be devoted to some other use, like a stairwell, something that's not living area, then the number may have to be reduced. That's it. And my final thing is, I did put, Ruth did put on your desk, just a fresh version of the document. It's identical in language, but there were some typos and formatting problems with what we had received, and in a couple of cases, it was slightly confusing. So I cleaned that up, and that's what you have in front of you tonight. But it's identical, language-wise, too.
Very good. So to clarify, this board is not, we're not approving any projects. We're reviewing a contract zone with several proposed uses. This is a concept that they provided-
That's right. The concept, the concept is intended to show that they've got the capacity, physically, to do what they say they're going to do. For example, you'd want to make sure that a contract zone that allows for fraternity or sorority with a maximum of 23 people would have space for parking, and still meet the buffer requirements and so forth. So the purpose of the concept drawing is to demonstrate that they've got the capacity to do, to meet the requirements of the ordinance, should there be a rezoning. But it is not a site plan. You're not approving the site plan. If this got rezoned, and they in fact did want to propose to have a fraternity or sorority, they'd have to come back to you with a site plan application that shows parking, lighting, landscaping, erosion control, stormwater management, and all the things that you'd normally have with a project that involves digging in the earth. This doesn't have any building expansion, but it would certainly be expanding parking and making some other improvements. I think, Mr. Chairman, the one thing is that, in your recommendation, you need to address, among other things, not solely, but how well does this comport to the comprehensive plan and any policies that might be relevant?
Right. So I guess my curiosity is, it seems that they've included some provisions in the contract zone, based on our recent comp plan discussions, as far as giving the code office the-
Yes.
... authority to actually deal with problems.
Yes, in fact, they have. And, yes, they have picked up the longstanding concerns the town has with the enforceability of maximum occupancy issues, and house guests, and burden of proof, and documentation that the code enforcement officer has the authority to ask for, and tried to incorporate those, tried to address those concerns through the contract zone agreement.
I didn't go to the town council meeting, so I didn't hear any of those discussions, but was there also discussion at that level about the student housing issues and the other things we've included in our comp plan? Our current-
Yes, yes, there was some discussion. I think that the council's conversation certainly provided some guidance to the applicant, if they wanted to move forward. But I emphasize that the council did not make any decisions, did not make any commitments. They simply felt it was ripe enough, what they heard, and what was in the plan, and some of the things they had picked up in terms of the, as you know, things that are in the proposed, new, updated comprehensive plan, they felt it was ripe to come forward to you, for you to hear what the applicant, what other interested parties, the residents, had to say, and then recommended them your thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before I open up public hearing?
I have a question for Evan. Is compatibility with the surrounding area one of the criteria for a contract zone?
Well, consistency with the comprehensive plan certainly would be, is this, you could think of it as a continuum. Is it compatible? That's one thing. Is it incompatible? Or sometimes you look at it, is it at least not in conflict, or not incompatible? You know, so there's kind of a middle thing. It doesn't really do any harm, it may not advance a goal or an objective, but it doesn't do any harm to things. So, you know, along that continuum, if you felt that it was not compatible with the surrounding area, and would do harm, then that would, almost by definition, be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, unless there was specific language to the contrary in the plan. But if you think that it fits in, that it is, that it is not unlike other uses that are in the area, that the addition of this kind of use would not, you know, create a burden to the surrounding area, then I think you could say that goes in the direction of being consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Any others?
I do have one. In the, in the contract, if you look at the new version that was on our Page 3, under three performance standards, item number four, if the rooming house has more than 16 occupants, she'll meet the standards of the NFPA, blah, 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 blah. Is 16 an arbitrary number, or is that within the NFPA?
That is within the NFPA.
Okay.
Phil, would you just remind everybody to turn their microphones on and talk into them?
Yeah, mics can stay on all the time. And as Ruth said, please lean forward and talk into them, because she is recording all this. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. There's a reasonable crowd here this evening. We're gonna invite everybody to come up, say your name, and please tell us, you know, whether you're a proponent or opponent of this. And once we hear arguments, it's nice to give everybody a chance to speak at these public hearings. So if you hear something that might have been already said, again, if you have something to add to that, that's great, but just keep in mind, you know, what other people have talked about, and hopefully, we'll be able to get through all the comments. So feel free, step up.
Thank you for your service. I volunteer for a lot of things, too, so I appreciate the time that people put in, you know, to make this the community we have. And-
State your name.
My name is Doug Allen, and we live at 6 Charles Street in Orenno. Want to say a few things that are relevant, and then just speak about the incredible impact this would have on our lives. And we are opponents of this. First, I joined the faculty in 1974, so I've been here now, this is the 41st year, and I just, I love students, and it's one reason I stayed. I love teaching. I spend a lot of time with students, volunteering as faculty advisor in clubs, volunteering at all of the track and cross-country meets. I do all these things. And so my relationship with students is very positive. I have a very positive view on the whole of University of Maine students. At the same time, I'm also realistic about young people and student life, which I observe every week, whether it's in the dormitories, or in the fraternities, or in certain off-campus living. Young people have to learn. They learn through excesses, and they do heavy drinking, even in dorms where you have restrictions. They do lots of heavy drugs, including some recent drugs that are very dangerous, but are kind of high-energy, mind-blowing, out-of-control experiences. And they behave in all kinds of different ways that young people do, sometimes with disastrous consequences for their life, but usually, they learn from their mistakes. That's part of growing up. So I'm just realistic, based on everything I see about our student body, about how students are gonna function in a proposed fraternity or sorority, in what, right now, is a very heavily residential area. So the, let me say that, first of all, I'm very impressed with the proposal, how thoughtful it is, and I think that the insensitive, and I have a feeling that the people who proposed it, I assume are good people, well-intentioned, have an entrepreneurial spirit, they want to have a business venture, and I think they really just have not thought through the disastrous consequences that this would have for all of our neighbors, who are super-concerned about this. And I must say, if this proposal were for another location in Orenno, not in the midst of a residential area, where we have certain student housing that's developed, I would favor it. Or even if it was a proposal for high school international students to live there, I would favor it. Or if it was a proposal, like our dentist lives across the street, if it was a proposal to develop some business opportunities, or research opportunities, or whatever, I would favor it. Okay, the, we, Charles Street is a wonderful neighborhood. We have great neighbors, caring, concerned. It's a great place to live, and people have lived there a long time. I know the Boils, who live across the street, could not come tonight. They're very concerned opposed to this. Judy Hackle is a wonderful person. They've lived in their house for 46 years. She could not come tonight, is super-concerned about this. So the concern that all of us have is this, and I thought about this, and then I'll just talk about our house, is that the more I thought about it, the more concerned I was, and then more than concerned, kind of dreaded what I see as very predictable, almost 100% ominous signs, as to the devastating impact that this would have on us and our neighbors. Why do I say that? I'll just mention our situation. We've lived in our house happily for 33 years, okay? We love the neighborhood, and where we live, and our neighbors. Put on a big extension to the house less than two years ago, which is mainly a huge study that I have. I spend 10 hours a day. I'm a workaholic, so I'm usually there seven days a week, working. That's where I prepare the teaching, my research, my writing. Last weekend, I spent about 12 hours a day writing on this. And from my study, our office on the house, I look out, this property is 15 feet away. 15 feet away, okay? There are some trees there, with big space, 10 feet between each tree, right? You could put in some more trees there. But think of this, you know, what the effect is. First of all, even normal effect, but let's say Thursday, Friday evening, Saturday evening, midnight, 1:00 in the morning, music blasting, 100 people partying, people binge-drinking, some things that are awful going on, kind of violence, sometimes rape, sometimes fisticuffs, all the stuff that just goes on, every weekend, with students, in the dormitories, off-campus. What do we do? What do we do at midnight or 1:00 in the morning, when you hear people shouting obscenities, music blasting, right in your, just a few feet from you? What do you do? Do you go out to 100 people and say to them, "Hey, would you stop partying? We know you're young people, but we'd really appreciate if you turn off the music and stop drinking," or, "Do we call the police?" And then face backlash from, which could make your life miserable? Or, "Do we call the owners? Wake them up at mid-" They're not gonna be living nearby. Do we call them and say, "Would you get out of bed and come down here?" And so it's just, we don't know how we'd deal with what in fact is, based on everything we know about student life, just predictable. Or even the everyday activities. You have, okay, so if you make a little lawn here, 20-foot lawn, next to our property, so the cars can't park 15 feet, they have to park, let's say, 30 feet from us, but are these fraternity sorority members not gonna be allowed to run on the lawn, to party on the lawn, to have cookouts, to throw footballs, and frisbees, and yell at doors? No, obviously not. So what I'm saying, it's just unmanageable, and when we think about the consequences of this for us, they are, we dread this. I mean, it is predictable that we will be just, our whole way of life will change- I mean, it is predictable that we will be just, our whole way of life will change. Living in our property will become very unattractive. We don't want to be through, we appreciate the good intentions, but we're going to have to be fighting these battles. You know there are people in that place who really are drinking. Would you do something? And this is an ongoing thing that we go through, that it becomes a central part of our life. So the main point is, just to end with, that there's good reason that this is a residential zone. There's good reason for it, right? And to change this from a residential zone, to make that zone change, even if I know this is a concept, finally, it's very hard to know how to respond to a concept when you don't have an actual proposal, because it's open-ended. It could be this, but maybe it's that, maybe, so, but even then, there's no concept that would delay, you know, the real anxiety and dread that we face, fear about this. So I think to, in this residential area, there is tremendous harm to the neighbors, and we all feel that, and to change the zone would be unreasonable, and really, finally, and really not respond to the real needs that very good neighbors who pay taxes, who care about this community, and are part of the glue that makes Orono such a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Others?
I'm Jim Ballinger, twenty-nine Charles Street. I'm going to piggyback, Doug took most of my thunder, so I don't have anything to say anymore. But I have had BBs, pellets, I live right behind the fraternity that's still there, that's being demoted to something else. And I've had pellets, I've had BB shells go over my head while I've been working in the garden. I have holes in the back of my house from the, from the pellets. Anywhere from ten o'clock to two o'clock in the morning, when the drinking stops, they come home, they're yelling and screaming obscenities every night that, this isn't, this isn't fun. Every night that they, that they come back from drinking. And I've lived, I've lived there forty years. And I have a, I, I do have one rule, I don't call till two o'clock in the morning, because I was in a fraternity. And I know what it's all about and what's going to happen. And if the, if it's an absentee owner, landowner, there's nothing they can do to stop those things happening to us on a regular basis. And I don't know if anybody knows that, but a sorority was there for two or three or four years in that building. And in some ways, that was worse than the, than the fraternities that were there. So don't, don't think that sororities are a nicer, nicer group of people, even though my, people of my age tend to think that. I think this would change the, the character of the neighborhood, which Doug said in a, in a different way, but I'm going to say it in that way, for the, for the worse. And what, what this looks at from me personally is, I'm going to have two times what I have now. So instead of getting up three or four times at three o'clock in the morning, I'm going to be up all night, calling the Orono Police Department. I don't use the campus anymore, because they don't do a good job. I don't think the traffic is going to be any, we have the hockey rink already. I don't think the traffic's going to be much better than it was before. I don't care how many parking places you put there. There's only enough parking places in there for the number of people living in that house. So if you don't have enough parking, it's, it's going to be a really a tough, tough ti, time on Charles Street. You can only have cars on one side of the road and let the fire equipment through as it is right now. I hate to see one of our houses on fire when the, when the, when the hockey game's in progress. It would be impossible for a truck to get in there. No way. I have to go to notes, I'm a little older than I used to be. Oh, the other, the other dilemma that we have is, we live there, we own our houses, and we, some of us might want to sell them if certain things transpire. Now how, I mean, how are we going to sell them? It doesn't matter if that sorority, if they're, if they're all angels that go in there. If you try to sell a house in a neighborhood where you have two, a fraternity and a sorority, and I'd like to, and, and this is going to give an impetus to the person that owns the blue house in the center there between the present fraternity and the property that we're talking about, it's on College Avenue. That just looks like he's waiting to see what happens with this, this, this thing that we're doing, you're acting on this evening, and seeing if he can't get in on the action. That would be what I would think he would be doing. Not know the person anyways, so no, no. I, you know, I can't tell you. I'm, I'm, I think I've covered pretty well. And you have explained, I was weren't, really worried about the sale of that property to someone else, but you, the, the type of sale you have is, if, if the property changes hands, then they have to come back to the zoning board, is that correct?
No.
No.
The contract.
You mean that, that, you mean somebody else can buy that house, like a national fraternity?
Somebody else could buy that house. Zoning always runs with the land. Somebody else would have, could buy the house, but they would, they would be bound to the same contract agreement.
Which would mean the, the alcohol and all those rules that go along with that?
Limit on alcohol and litter and all those things, everything would still hold, yes.
Okay. I was worried a national fraternity could come in there and buy out from this people that are, that have it now, and could, would not be as, as, as nice and fuzzy as these guys.
I should, I should say, the contract zone will be filed at the register of deeds, so that anybody buying would, would be aware of what they're entering.
And that, that was another really severe concern that I had.
But my understanding from, from what we heard, if there's disorderly properties, the contract could be revoked, that is, that's.
Yes, there's a provision in here that allows the council to revoke without grandfathered rights, if, you know, under certain things. But, you know, that would be after the thing has occurred, and, but, yes.
And I, one last thing, I'd like to know if Sundance has any relationship to the fraternity behind me, the property.
I do, Jim, yeah, I do.
We'll need you to speak into the mic, just simple, simple answer. We, we do need to have enough time for everybody to speak.
Well, and this is a very relevant point. It's not anything I'd hide from. I'm disgusted with what's happening at three-eighty College Avenue. When I was an undergraduate, I had purchased that house as an undergraduate and set up this type of alumni structure. I, I hope, Jim, that it went better for you as our backyard neighbor, ninety-eight to two thousand two, when I was there, but maybe it didn't. Maybe my, my memories of those times are different. But I think that it's very emblematic of a broken structure. So four years ago, when Bill Murphy was required to close that house, I became involved again. The alumni that were in charge of that house had failed in their responsibilities and FedExed me a package with all their paperwork. And so for the last four years, yes, I've been working to improve the situation at three-eighty College Avenue. You know, I see you have the newspaper article there. I'd be concerned about my affiliation with that, and it's something that we should talk about. What I will tell you is that voluntarily, I have evicted the people in that house, though their national organization has failed to recognize them, and the university has also. As landlord, I was not obligated to, to kick these young men out. You know, a great expense to this nonprofit corporation I run, probably ten or fifteen thousand dollars, with the assistance of the town and university, having had Bill, Henry Vaughn, Josh Ewing, and folks from the university police out there, we, we started the eviction process. I wish I could get those people out of there sooner, but they have legal standing that probably will keep them there the next four weeks to the end of this semester. As we move forward with three-eighty College Avenue, we are looking to structure it much like this. That's where I have accountability for that.
I would like to stick to the, the issue at hand. We're looking at this property.
Oh, sorry, yeah, he wanted to know my affiliation to three-eighty College Avenue. I do have affiliation there. I've evicted the tenant, and we're looking for a better structure there.
Very good, we understand. Thank you.
Oh, and the other thing I wanted to ask you, are there any other projects that you know of in the United States where this, this type of concept is being proposed or in, in workable order?
Through discussions with my national fraternity, which wouldn't have any affiliation with three-eighty-four College Avenue, there are instances of private ownership stepping in to create a better model for sorority houses or fraternity houses.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm not, that answer didn't, I, I need to know if, if there's one plan that you've drawn up, or yours is the original.
Chairman, I think you could simply take that as a question that needs to be answered at some point.
I think, I think we'll, we'll address that. Again, we'll, we'll consider that, but we do need.
Okay, thank you very much.
We've drawn this up independently.
Next.
My name is Alma Hamoa. I live at three-eighty-six College Avenue, so my home is on the opposite corner from the property as described. Now, I don't know if you people have, have neighborhood maps in front of you.
We do.
So you know, you know.
We know your house.
All right, so you know that.
We need, yeah, sorry, we have to have you in.
You know that, that this, this is a private home here, and Doug, Doug's home is here, and my home is there, okay? The bedrooms on my home are facing this building. That is a two-story building, so it is impossible to screen it with these nicely-planted evergreen shrubs. And it is impossible to park sixteen cars or twenty cars in that back without the lights bothering me. It is impossible. Now, my home also has been upgraded recently. Mine has, Doug's has, Mr. Ballinger has. We've all put considerable money in our homes, and like he says, who's going to buy it? You're going, it will destroy the neighborhood, and that other private home will become a contract zone. And I guess you've heard the word, that Mr. Campbell has not been able to control his property at three-eighty College Avenue. So why would you give him the opportunity to have another one? Drainage is another problem. If they're going to pave that parking lot, we're already in trouble drainage-wise, and this is not going to help. But mostly, I mean, I, I could have moved, but if this happens, I won't be able to move, because no one would buy my house. Would you buy my house? I'm going to take your name down, I'm going to call each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Hi, yes, thank you to the, for the evening opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Lang. I live on Kell Street. I work at the university. I walk to work every day of the week and walk home every day, and I walk to work sometimes on the weekend as well. The, there are some fraternities, and I am opposed to this project. There are some fraternities that are in this area, further closer to the university. They are adjacent to one house. They are directly adjacent and in the line, the sightline and soundline of one house, which is Mr. Jim Ballinger's house. This fraternity, however, would be immediately in the sound and sightlines of several houses. It would be much more expansive than what currently exists. And what currently exists is already a problem, as I'll turn to in a moment. This plan, I didn't know it until now, has this paved parking lot on Charles Street. Charles Street is a delight. Charles Street does not need twenty-plus cars, or whatever it is, to be driving in and out all day, every day. Charles Street is a beautiful, quiet street, and my view should remain so with its beautiful trees and beautiful people, and should not become what College Avenue is, which is an overdriven road. Let's leave Charles Street, please, the way it is. So what I oppose to this project is the, the changing of the neighborhood. College Avenue already has much too much traffic that goes much too fast. This is a problem that, of course, this group cannot address, but this is a major problem. Cars do not drive the speed limit on that street. We are, we, we who live in this neighborhood are dealing with this problem. I have an eight-year-old son, and I have to deal every day with the fact that cars do not respect human life on College Avenue. The existing fraternities, and I'm sorry to hear now that the proponent here is involved in these, or treat the street as a dumping ground, they are dirty. I walk over this trash every day. They are loud. Now, it's okay once in a while to be loud, but they are consistently loud, and above all, for me, they are dirty. And so one has been bounced for reasons that Doug Allen addressed. In general, this proposal, as I see it, intensifies the commercialization of this neighborhood. This neighborhood is already over-commercialized with all of its traffic. Fraternities that have signs with advertisements for Monster Speed Drink, or whatever it is, we don't need more commerce in this neighborhood. We need a lessening of commerce. We need a calming in this neighborhood. It's already bearing the brunt of the connection to the university, which has its pluses, but also has its negatives, and this would enhance this negative. And finally, this middle house that's referred to, surely, I don't see how, if you grant this change in status, you would be able to deny it to this next house, which would then further erode what we have, which is a very nice place, and I ask you to, to help us maintain the nice place where we live. Quick, thank you.
I'm Lindsay Kerr, and I live at one Old Meadow Lane, which exits onto College. I'm very well shielded from this plan. I have a five-hundred-foot driveway down to a fairly private lot. I do, however, butt to the dentist, who I also go see, and he does a great job of my teeth as well. And we're right next door to a fraternity, and I have spent way too many Saturdays calling for as the golf balls come over into my, into my yard. I think this is a beautiful plan. I oppose it really based on the density and the number of cars and people who would be on the site. I think you have twenty-three people and twelve significant others, you're looking up into the thirties, and I don't know really how you're going to prevent that from happening, so I think you do have a fire hazard. I think it's going to be disruptive for the, my neighbors living on, on Charles Street, it just, that's such a, it's a tiny little street, it's, it's a, it's a fun walk, and you have a driveway coming out with a number of cars on a very regular basis. And I do, I would say that no one respects the speed limit on, on College Avenue. Not to disrespect our police department, but we've had a very difficult situation with, with, with our neighbor, and I, and we've had not what I would consider up-to-par responses to calls that we've made. So I think, if you, if we think we're going to be calling the police, I think that they are in a difficult position of having to enforce a lot of these things that we, what we might like to see happen. And I think retribution is, is an issue when you have, have, because we've all been there, have young people fueled by, by fiery ideas late at night, instead of studying and go to bed. So I just, I just don't, I, I really do like the plan, I like the idea, I would love to see, I wouldn't mind having a, a nice business in there. I live next to the dentist, who has tenants. You know, the tenants are out occasionally on my, on my yard, that's okay. The trash is picked up, the, the house is well-maintained, there's someone who owns that property who's in there every day. I think if you have an off-site tenant, and, and you have people who're living there, who are going to be there in, in very, in a very dense numbers, it totally changes what's, what, what that property is going to, going to be. And I think we will see a change along the rest of the avenue. Lastly, I spent some time searching today the impact of fraternity and sorority houses online, not that I didn't have something else to do, but I did it anyways, and it does significantly drive down property values. So I think you all are going to make a decision that's going to affect our, our, our wealth, our, our ability to, to resell our homes and what they will be of value to someone else, and that is very significant. Thank you.
Next.
I'm Evelyn Dearborn, and we have, we live right behind Alma, across from Doug, and right in front of our yard is where they will be parking, and there never, never is parking enough there. Right at the moment, we're living at Deergo Pines, because my husband is sick, and we don't know exactly at the moment. Our family still wants to hold the house, but if we tried to sell it under these conditions, there's no way that anybody's going to buy it with that right in the front yard. And as for the, the little area across here where they're going to park, they've had parking there for years, and they never, ever have enough for football games, for hockey games, anything, without all the people in. without all the people in that building. And it's been that way, but it has continued to get worse and worse. And Alma is right. We've had real problems with sanitary. The street has been dug up, well, three or four times in the last ten years anyway, more than that, I think. And because it's so flat, it doesn't drain, and they try to get it to drain, and it's always a problem. And if you had that many more people, I can imagine.
Thank you. I do wanna point out one thing as far as this board for review standards, effect on neighboring properties, that is not something that we can consider as typically a part of our application process. So, we understand your concerns.
I thought Evan just answered my question.
Yes. Typically, we don't.
You certainly cannot in subdivision or site plan review.
For this one, we can, though.
In rezoning, you can certainly look at the question of impact on surrounding properties, yes. And that goes to consistency and compatibility question.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I apologize.
I'm Elsa Petersons, and I also live at Six Charles Street. And, but I'm, since Doug already spoke about the problems we would face at Six Charles Street, I have a memo here from John McCormick, who couldn't be here tonight. And he asked me to read this. He also opposes the project. "I'm unable to attend the April fifteenth planning board meeting," oh, he lives at Nine Spear and Drive. "I'm very much against this zone change, as I believe it will significantly change the character of our neighborhood in a negative way. Some of the reasons this use is not compatible for this property include loud noise and parties, parking issues, number of occupants, lighting, dumpster location, truck noise to empty it, upkeep. Fraternities typically run low on funds to maintain properties. The density of this use is wrong for this area. If the board considers this change, fences should be installed by the applicants to shield the adjoining properties. We urge the board to vote no on this change." I'd like to just mention that a fence would not take care of the problems that people have been mentioning about noise and alcohol consumption and so on. And I have someone who lives in another part of Orno, who lives across from a house where there are a lot of, it's not owner-occupied, so a lot of students living there. And she said that there are parties all night long. She's called the police. The police can't do anything. She's called the landlord. The landlord can't do anything. So, as much as the developers might want to have, you know, have these kinds of limitations, as Doug said, I think they're very hard to enforce. So, I hope you'll reject this change.
Thank you. Others?
My name is Jim Toner. I live on Kell Street. And you said not to repeat any of the other reasons why folks are against this proposal. I am against it. And this gentleman over here talked about a continuum in response to this woman's question about compatibility. And as far as I'm concerned, this project is incompatible with the neighborhood. And on that compatibility continuum that you talked about, it is so far over, it's all the way to the extreme side of that compatibility continuum, as far as I can tell.
Thank you. Others?
All right, I'm gonna leave the public hearing open and invite comments or questions from the board. You look like you're ready to grab the mic.
No, no, I'm not ready to. I'm just gonna suggest maybe the applicant would like to speak to some of the things that we've.
I think that is a good suggestion. You've heard, I think, fairly loud and clear, a number of the concerns you have included in your contract zone language, your application. You talk about some assurances and giving the town the authority to stem some of these issues. But I'd really like to hear your response to the, it's a fairly common concern that you've heard here.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think everyone presented themselves in a very thoughtful and respectful way, which I appreciate. I do understand the concerns you have. If I lived in that neighborhood, I would likely share those concerns, and I would be at this meeting. We're trying to build this out in a way where, though we cannot control what happens, and we do know student nature, we at least have some ability to stop this if we cannot control it and we cannot be good neighbors. You know, we have a nine-bedroom home sitting a hundred feet further from the closest fraternity. I know that that's a hundred feet closer. That impacts a lot of people because someone mentioned line of sight. You know, the closest property, though a hundred feet away, really impacts, unfortunately or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, Mr. Ballinger. Whereas this property is more visible to many people, and I do understand that. You know, again, we're trying to build in as many contingencies as we can here so that if we're not successful in controlling the atmosphere at this property, that the town would be able to stop the use. You know, I think it's worth pointing out, this is a vacant property. It's a nine-bedroom property that I know Ted Corey, in the past, typically used for student housing. And though we are significantly increasing the density.
No.
Well, that's arguable. But it is a nine-bedroom vacant property. There is probably legitimate reason to believe that you may, again, be faced, if not with us, with other people that may use this as student housing. We are asking to increase the density by quite a bit. I do understand that. On the other side of that, I think we're giving really unprecedented ability for the town and to the degree we can, any of the neighbors, to build in performance standards to try to stop that. You know, what happens at eleven o'clock or twelve o'clock on a Friday night? You're right, I can't stop. To the degree that my partner can, he would be willing to come out at any time to do that. So would I. But we all know that it's hard to stop things as they happen. I would say that we're trying to build a plan here where we can, in reasonably short order, stop this process if it's not working out the way we intend for it to.
Thank you.
Any other points that you'd like me to address before I step away?
I do have a question about.
I apologize. We need to have all of this on the record. So, if you're gonna ask him a question, please step up.
You mentioned sorority, and I'm just wondering why, do you have already something said, or why do you say sorority?
Yeah, there's a pretty simple reason why I favor sorority. When we look at Greek houses, so either fraternity or sorority, there is no fraternity that could occupy that house. The fraternities that do not have a current residence number in members fourteen, 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 and twenty. So, arguably, one of those may fit in this house. The others don't provide us the revenue we need to maintain that property. There are seven to nine sororities, all with membership, you know, in a range that would allow them the ability to occupy the house. So, it's simply a matter of numbers. You know, I don't necessarily prefer one over the other. I think, you know, Mr. Ballinger had mentioned there was an occupant at 380 College Avenue with sorority, and maybe that wasn't a, you know, an agreeable situation either. Or no more agreeable than a fraternity.
You propose a live-in resident.
Yeah, built into these.
Twenty-two years of age, I believe, was mentioned. Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's something that was built into the contract zone. That's consistent with what the university requires, to have a live-in advisor who is not an undergraduate to manage that property. Always open to the idea, I think traditionally there were people, you know, called house moms that would live there. I think in this day and age, it's hard to find, you know, someone well past their early twenties that would wanna live and reside there. But yes, there is, you know, there is a free rent provided to, you know, to someone that is the house advisor and responsible, signs a contract both with Gary and I and with the university in terms of what their responsibilities are in that house.
What authority would they have? I mean, to, again, stem any problems that arise?
Well, I mean, I think practically, hypothetically, they have the ability to take action. Practically, I think that they would be more in a situation where they'd call in additional help. At the moment, if it was loud on a Friday night, they would be asked to stop that. If it was a consistent problem, they'd probably need to reach out to Gary, the university, or the town police to try to mitigate that.
Do you have any, I'm just thinking, we've talked as a comp plan at some length about an education process so that if you're gonna have, you know, whoever students, whether it's a sorority or fraternity or a bunch of other students, an education process so that they actually might understand that they're living in a residential neighborhood. That was one of the components we discussed. I mean, the students need to understand their responsibilities if they're gonna be living in a neighborhood.
Yeah, I would welcome that. I mean, if this does come to pass, I'm not gonna turn my back on the folks here. I would want to do anything we can, including introductions and finding a way to make this work in a way that best works for anybody involved. I don't know of any existing education plans for kind of neighborhood outreach, but I think it would be an important component of what we're doing.
All right. Is there a question? You can step up the mic. I'm gonna have to ask that the conversations, that the conversations going on in the crowd, everybody will have a chance to talk, but it's very difficult for this board to hear. So, please, please cease that and step up to the mic if you have a question.
My name and address and again?
Oh, please hit us again.
Jim Ballinger, Twenty-Nine Charles Street.
Thank you.
I have some insight on advisors and fraternities. I was the advisor at Delta Ta' Delta for about thirty-five years. And sometimes it was great, and sometimes it really sucked. But for the most part, I was not a live-in advisor, and I never would be a live-in advisor. But all that I know of, no matter what their age, have wound up not being effective and in some cases, being part of the group. So, that was just be my, and I did have a house mother when I was in.
Thank you. All right.
I believe my attorney wanted to make a comment related to maybe some things I had said.
Please.
I just wanna make a few quick comments. One thing I wanna point out to the board here is that many of these concerns that have been raised are very valid. But I need to unfortunately point out to the board that those concerns are raised because these people are familiar with fraternities. And the board needs to consider, in fact, how that weighs in favor of this being compatible with the nature of the neighborhood. We know that they, we've heard concerns that we don't want more of what we've seen before. But the fact that there is some is something that the board has to consider. These are uses that these people are familiar with because they're close by and they are already part of the neighborhood. What we're looking to do is to provide real recourse that these people who have spoke today don't have with the current fraternities when there is a problem. There's this assumption that I'm reading into the lines from these comments that these contracts are all well and good, but there really won't be any effect that they can have. That's just not the case. Evan will correct me. But if there are violations of the provisions in these performance standards, the town can bring the owners in and make them show cause as to why those violations have occurred. If they cannot do that, and the burden would be on them to prove that they have a valid excuse, then this zoning change can go away. If this zoning change goes away, then further use as a fraternity becomes a violation of the zoning ordinance. Penalties for that type of violation are extreme and would make continued use of that kind impossible. So, essentially, although it might take a few steps, what we're proposing here allows for this use to go away if it doesn't work. That's not the case for many of the fraternities that are here. You have the other traditional legal means that you have to call the police, but you don't have what we're proposing here. It might come in, but if it's a problem, there's a way for it to go away. And that's what we're trying to give the town here.
Next.
Yeah, I'm gonna allow just a few more comments, and then I'm gonna close the public hearing. The board needs to have a chance to discuss.
I just wanna respond to this last comment, which said that we are already dealing with fraternities. But they're asking for a zone change. So, I mean, that point is irrelevant. It doesn't matter what we have already. We have problems. But we're asking for a zone change here. So, that's the key.
Thank you. Yep. We'll take two more comments, and then we need to.
Just a lot of, I wanna say, a couple of comments you've made and questions, and some people have responded. And I just wonder, I'm trying to, most students are very nice people, y'all are all right. I just, to me, there's something unreal about this. Saying to a group of undergraduate fraternity or sorority students, now, we want you to be nice because, you know, you have a lot of neighbors. And please be very considerate about all the neighbors, and don't behave the way you always behave. So, what I wanna just suggest, I work closely with RAs on campus. That's more controlled. They live in the dormitories, right there, on the floors where they supervise, they organize, there are all kinds of rules. In the last month, we've had a number of sessions, and here's what several of these RAs say about these problems. Well, there's not much you can do about it. What you don't want is these kids to be hospitalized or suicidal or, but you know, when they drink, we're not gonna throw them out of the dorm. We're gonna try to just get them at some point to bed. And you know there's all the sexual stuff going on and out-of-control people in the dorm who aren't supposed to be there? We're not gonna, live and let live, and just as long as they're just, you know, not harming other people, you just go along with it. And there you have rules and people living there, right? And it's not even like, what about those people living down the block who have houses? So, I just think it's unrealistic to have a twenty-two-year-old or someone in there who's gonna be able to control, which is one-hundred percent predictable, young people's behavior in college age.
Thank you. Last one.
Last one?
I'd like to, Jim Ballinger, I'd like to know the punitive action part when something goes wrong. If it's a fraternity or sorority, do you charge the group or do you charge an individual? Or if you can't find the individual, how do you figure that out?
Yeah, that's been a challenge with the existing structure I've had to deal with, where the individuals are shielded because you have a landlord, you have the tenants, and then between them, you have a chapter. And the landlord doesn't, can't drill in and see who individually may be responsible. You know, I would say that in this new structure, ultimately, Gary and I are responsible. If we can turn that back towards an individual's deposit, that's our business. But from a neighbor or town perspective, if there's a problem, we're responsible for addressing that financially. Aaron, did you have something to follow?
I just wanted to say that Mr. Kennedy does live about three miles away. So, this isn't a question of someone living out of state or living very far away and not having access to the premises.
Very good. Thank you all. I'm gonna close the public hearing and limit discussion to the board. We've heard a lot of concern. We've talked about this as a comp plan, how to try to, you know, best find that balance between student housing that we've talked about in the comp plan and preserving neighborhoods as well. So, again, the nineteen ninety-eight.
Chairman, I'm sorry, there is, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Quite all right.
There was an email that was on your desks that should have been right into the public record, should be right into the record.
If I can find it. Thank you. This, okay, there's two emails here.
It's from, yes, this was forwarded by Counselor Maynard because she received it.
Yeah, what Evan said, this email was forwarded to us by the chairman of the town council. This is from Lorraine Eckwertsel. I hope I didn't butcher that too badly. This, that.
Eckwertsel.
Eckwertsel, very good. Thank you. This is April fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, eleven twenty-seven a.m. Subject is potential for sorority on corner of Charles Street and College Avenue. Dear Ms. Maynard and others, Orno Town Council members, I'm writing this letter to show support for our neighbors at the meeting tonight. We stand with many of them who are against the possible purchase of the house at the corner of Charles and College Ave. by a national sorority. The Charles Street, Charles Circle neighborhood is a currently wonderful residential surprise package. Who would guess that a lovely, mostly quiet and attractive little residential. corner of Charles and College Ave. by a national sorority. The Charles Street, Charles Circle neighborhood is a currently wonderful residential surprise package. Who would guess that a lovely, mostly quiet and attractive little residential neighborhood is tucked in right next to the University of Maine Sports complex? It seems to me that Orno lacks small, affordable residential neighborhoods like this one, and that the town should do everything in its power to preserve.